Good evening and welcome to the Finley Council meeting of August 4, 2020. Regular session and we will start with the roll.
Mr. Greenow?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Hellman? Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Here.
Mr. Slough?
Here.
Ms. Wornikie?
Here.
And Mr. Wolpser?
Present.
Both Mr. Palmer and Mr. Hellman informed me that they would not be present tonight due to circumstances beyond their control. I would tender a motion, Mr. Russell.
So moved.
That they be excused. Second, Mr. Slough. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor excusing Mr. Palmer and Mr. Hellman from tonight's meeting say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. They are excused. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence in honor of David Wolpser, our former service safety director and father of Jeff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the acceptance to the previous city council meeting minutes. Mr. Slough?
I would move to approve the city council regular session of July 21st.
Second, Mr. Greenow. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the acceptance to the July 21st regular session of city council say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. They are accepted. Mr. Slough?
I would move to accept the minutes from the July 21st meeting for the public hearing.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the July 21st, 2020 public hearing minutes to rezone all that Madison Avenue. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are accepted. Mr. Russell, do we have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda?
We have one add-on. I would move the ordinance 2020-0, 093 concerning city insurance policies be added to the agenda.
Second, Mr. Slough. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the add-ons say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Hearing no nays, the add-ons are accepted. We have no proclamations, we have no recognition or retirement resolutions, and we have no oral communications. Petitions?
An alley vacation request from Van Horn Hoover and Associates Incorporated, President Dean Stone, on behalf of Jeff J. McCracken, to vacate a portion of the northern right-of-way of Lake Caskeith Parkway in the vicinity of Cooper Tire and Rover Company.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. This will be referred to the City Planning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Committee. Written communications?
A letter from Hancock County landfill SW...what is that?
Solid Waste.
Solid Waste Management District Clerk Molly Wally regarding Hancock County Solid Waste Management Five-Year Plan.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Letter could be filed. Reports of municipal officers and departments.
A letter from Law Director Don Rasmussen regarding funds for 2020 Legal Financial Services Object Code 441400, deal ordinance 2020-85.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Report to be filed.
City Planning Commission Agenda for August 13th, 2020, as well as the minutes of July 9th, 2020.
Any questions or comments? Agenda and minutes to be filed.
Letter from, yeah, Mayor Mern regarding second quarter 2020 KPIs.
Questions or comments? Mr. Wolpser?
Mayor, a couple of quick questions and you pointed out or made note of these in the top comments section, most of them at least. The, you had a counter to water situation. We've got, you were saying that we've got this under control. What are, what measures are we taking at this point? It seems like it's really in a pretty steep incline.
So we've had a number. That's something that we've been monitoring closely.
Right. I knew we had an issue, but...
Yes. And we are currently investigating. One of the things we've been doing is obviously going through all the commercial water meters. I would love to say we have an answer to why we have had an increase in our lost water revenue. We are currently investigating that. It's been climbing over the last number of months and we don't have a clear reason why at this point. So we are looking into a number of measures, one of which seems a little strange, but I threw it out there. We're investigating using a drill to look at the temperature changes and where the water's from. Because we really, we've checked our system. We have no changes in pressure. We don't, we aren't seeing any changes in our system, but we're seeing an increase. So we're not sure if it's a calibration issue or if it's truly lost water. So we are investigating that. And right now, we're pretty much taking all the measures that are possible, which is why we're saying that we've got it under control. But it is something we're continuing to investigate.
Very good. The other question I had was on the cleanings of the sanitary and storm sewers and catch basins. Looks like we've been lagging in 2019 and 2020 versus 2017, 2018 numbers. Now, that could just mean that we really did really, really well in those two years, or maybe we are actually lagging in those two areas. Of course, it's hard to tell. We're at 2020 right now. I wouldn't expect those to be it. So are we getting behind, or are we just, it seemed, would seem like that's something we don't want to get behind it?
If that's all right with you, I'll have Service Director Brian Thomas answer that question. Brian?
That's something that we're also working on. The big thing with the, with the cleaning and the televising that our crews do, they do that when they have the time to do it. So somebody's not doing it every day. If there's a big street project going on and we need them to replace catch basins or race manholes, they're doing that and that takes away from time they can do that other stuff with. As far as the televising goes, we're having a pre-construction meeting on Thursday for the big project for this year. So that'll get started. So for the contracted part, that'll bring a bunch of it in. We're currently under, they're finishing up the lining projects from last year. So those numbers weren't in there yet. So that'll bring that number up. And it's really just a matter of, you know, are they doing A or are they doing B?
Good. Makes, so really it's a manpower issue?
It's a, it's a manpower problem, issue, yes.
And I, you made comment about we've got the job meeting coming up for the televising, which I would expect because we just, we approved that some time ago. And that'll be getting those numbers up. I mean, if it's a manpower issue and obviously they're off on other projects doing something, is this something, though, that we can continue to let go? Are we hurting ourselves in the long run by not cleaning out these catch basins?
The catch basins aren't as big of a deal as the sewers and televising the sewers. Televising the sewers are how we figure out where our problems are, where the sewers are broken. So that's what we use to focus our attention on where we repair. So the catch basins all have sumps in them. So there's like two feet below the pipe that fills up with water that lets bags, garbage, dirt, whatever settle out. So the cleaning really cleans that out to make sure that that doesn't get into the pipe.
Right.
So if that, if that fills up, you will be getting some of that sediment in the pipe. So that will hurt a little bit, but it's not as bad as, okay, now it's next year. I need to figure out where I need to spend money fixing sewers and I don't know what the condition of them are. So the televising is really more of a bigger issue than cleaning out the catch basin.
Okay. I guess, as long as you feel, pardon me?
Did that answer your question?
Oh, it answers my question. Yeah. I kind of figured it wasn't a manpower issue since we're doing all that internally. I guess just as long as you feel like we're not putting ourselves at risk by not having this addressed either internally or externally for long-term because it looks like we're probably going to end up at our second year. I don't know if you want to count 2017, 2018 as a baseline for these two things or not, but seems like they were pretty level. If we're long-term, if we're looking at causing ourselves a problem by not taking care of this stuff now because we're putting those, that manpower someplace else.
It's our, it's my intention that if it gets to the point where it's going to hurt us in the future, you're going to know about it.
Okay.
You know, I had this, not everybody agreed with getting the streets raided, but I got that done so we could focus on the money on the streets of where we wanted to.
Understood.
Did something similar with the water line. That's more probability-based than statistically-based because you can't see the water lines. They're under the ground. The sewers, we can't see them. So, you know, that's where I'm trying to focus is on the sewer part. But yeah, we're not going to let things go to where it hurts us.
Fantastic. That's what I wanted. Thank you. Mr. Russell?
This is really analogous to the, to raiding the streets. And I thought this was a focus that we were, I don't remember the exact timeline. We were looking to get every 100% of our sewers looked at, but was it, was it like 10 years we were hoping to finish off the rest of the city?
For televising, yes. I think on the cleaning, their rotation, I believe, is about eight years to get it all cleaned in eight years. But for televising, yes. I want to get it done as soon as I can.
But we had talked about this in previous years and I thought we were working towards a finishing off, you know, like a 10-year rotation that we would do the entire city. So I'm kind of, kind of following up on Jeff's thought. Is it, or how far are we behind that whatever plan that we did establish? Are we now looking at being done in 12 years or 14? Or is that unknown?
As far as the televising, I still plan on being done in the timeframe that we mentioned earlier or sooner. This, this project that's going to be starting on Thursday where we had the pre-construction meeting, it's, it's, we're spending twice the money of what we did last year to get stuff televised. That's going to be a big, a big help. That's going to knock a bunch of it out. And, you know, we need to do that. So it's, it's not the, the televising's not going to be hurt in a detrimental way.
And all the previous councils have been very supportive of that effort. So that's going to be, we're going to bite off a big chunk this year. Thank you.
Mr. Greenow?
Yes. The televising is being done by an outside contractor. Is that correct?
The one that we're having the pre-construction meeting for, yes. We, we started last year or the year before, I don't remember which, contracting part of that out to help get the time that it takes to view it all down. I think this is the third year that we did it. So before it was just all done with city employees, which is fine, but sometimes they have other things that they have to take care of. You know, when they get calls that there's sewage backing up in the basement, they've got to go look at that or if there's a problem here or there. And that just takes away from their time for that. So this is being done to help get that time cut down.
Well, I'm assuming since contractors will be doing this televising, that that will possibly open up more time for the dedicated storm sewer, the catch basin cleaning.
Correct.
So that we may see an increase over the rest of the year.
Okay. Any other questions concerning the KPI? Hearing none. That will be filed. Thank you.
A letter from Safety Director Paul Schmelzer regarding EWC Safety Intervention Grant.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Mayor Mern regarding Finley Reservoir Number One State of Ohio Cooperation Fishing Agreement.
Questions? Mr. Wolpser?
Mayor, I pretty much think I know the answer to my question, but I'll ask anyway because as I read through this wonderful contract, it looks like the state's got all the rights and regulations here to do whatever the heck they want. And we get the privilege of agreeing to it. I'm just looking here at both of these agreements, a fishing agreement. Yeah, I guess they're both the same on both sides. There are two different ones on each side of this. But they can basically back out of this whenever they want. Doubt that they will, but they could. Do we have the ability to back out of this whenever we want if for some reason we needed to tell the fishermen not to ban our reservoirs anymore?
I'm sure if there was a concern environmentally or water quality-wise that we needed to address, we would be able to approach that. I have not read through the specific language on this. This is a pretty standard. We've been in it for the last 20 years. There's not a whole lot of changing it, but I believe if we raise a concern with the State of Ohio, they'd be pretty understanding.
All right. Just want to make sure because this one's definitely in their favor.
If you want to take it up with the Ohio Department of Emergency, you'd be right.
I'll call Mr. Galway.
Any other questions?
Okay. Letter be filed.
A letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Cordogna regarding City of Finley RLF Penrose Public Infrastructure Number 35702700.
Mr. Russell?
In the first sentence of this, there's an error. It references ordinance 2020-07 that should be Resolution 17-2020. I don't know what the mechanism is. I'll update the letter, but the letter should reflect what the resolution versus the ordinance and ask that it be amended and filed or whatever the correct process is.
Without objection? So moved. Mr. Cordogna, I know you wanted to make a couple of comments about the letter.
Ordinance 2020-88 is appropriating funds for the Penrose water line. We are hoping to have that project completed by the end of August to keep up with the timeframe of the contractor building the apartment building. So in my letter, I did request that we waive the three readings and pass it on an emergency basis. I just wanted to let you know why. We're trying to have the water line in as they do the site work and then start construction of the building. We plan on having the pre-construction meeting at the end of the week and then they'll get out there and start working as soon as the contracts are all executed. So. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Traffic Commission Minutes for July 20th, 2020.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell?
In item six on this, as a discussion, this speed bumps analysis, there came out of a complaint in zoning committee concerning alley vacation. One of the concerns was a citizen who said that they were worried about the speed of cars in their alley. And it's not a complaint that we have, it's a complaint that we have heard numerous times. And I noticed that the traffic commission basically said, we'll worry about it when we need to worry about it. And so I'm asking that, and they said they put together a citywide criteria for when the speed bumps or speed humps are valid use for a situation. Asking that that effort be undertaken. Speeding at alleys is common. It happened in the alley behind me as the neighbor, neighbor's daughter learned how to drive. It was always interesting how fast you'd be good on that alley. And it's not something that we can have any expectation that the police can monitor. Speed bump or hump would take care of that. So I'd ask the engineering office if they would be so kind as to put together what those criteria would be for when it's a proper situation. I don't know the way to formally request that, so I'm doing it here. If there's, if there's input into why we just didn't think it was worth doing now, please, well, thanks.
Mr. Schmelzer?
Yeah, I think part of the comments or conversation wasn't so much on the technical right, but we'll just worry about it when we have to worry about it. It was that there are a lot of variables involved. Add that to the point where we're looking to maintain speed bumps, which was the request. Conversation was driven more around speed humps at an intersection in the alleys. Speed bumps, where do you put them? How many do you put down? We've experimented with this in, on public streets before. So the conversation was really, we don't want to do speed bumps anywhere. If there's a method to control speeding, it would be at intersections. And when you get to the point where you're putting raised intersections in to control speed, you're also affecting drainage. You're affecting maintenance. You're affecting people's ability in some cases with certain vehicles to move up and down the right-of-way. So if that's something that you're interested in exploring, I recommend that it be done from a policy perspective. I'm not here saying that I have any idea of what those criteria should be. I'm open to those suggestions because it's going to open up a wide array of issues for us if we want to start introducing that environment into our alley.
Mr. Russell?
Are there other alternatives for controlling the speed on alleys in particular?
Hot holes.
And actually, and that's very true. Every time you fix the alley behind us, the speeds walk to the roof. So should we tell Matt and Dave to quit doing such a good job?
Well, I think sort of sending the opposite message to our crews for the last nine years, and that is that we want to see alleys on a routine managed program so that they are something that can be easily traversed. But make no mistake that after we improve it and it's more easily passable, that people don't always use common sense.
Any other questions?
So I guess to the point of your request, happy to have a conversation and see what your thoughts are regarding those criteria. I just did not want to, as a traffic commission, make a decision based on one situation without making a more citywide consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A letter from Service Director, African City Engineer Brian Thomas regarding 2020 FAA CARES Act Grant Project Number 35201900.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Service Director, African City Engineer Brian Thomas regarding Runway 725 Rehab Crack Seal Design Construction Project Number 35293200.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Service Director, African City Engineer Brian Thomas regarding Rehabilitate Taxway A A4A6 Construction Project Number 35202300.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed. Committee reports.
Water and Sewer Committee met on July 30th, 2020 to discuss March 11th, 2020, May 21st, 2020, and July 16th, 2020 updates to the water meter transmitter project. This recommended, this recommendation is contingent upon a resolution of the bidding issues discussed in this meeting. If the issue has been resolved, we recommend to go ahead with the infrastructure portion of this project. This includes a purchase and installation of 11 DCUs software and integration into billing software. Also included will be the purchase of 324 transmitters for the year 2020. We recommend that $250,000 be appropriated out of the sewer fund to match the $250,000 that has already been appropriated out of the water fund.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell?
Just to point, it says 325 transmitters in the committee report and on the events in the, on the packet, it says 324. That should be 325.
Without objection? So changed. Mr. Greenow?
Yeah, I believe as I first read it, recommendations to change the Department of Resolution of Bidding Issue, which was discussed at the meeting. I believe there still is some discussion with that, but I think we can go ahead and accept this committee report if you, if you find that it's okay. And I think everything can be worked out. So I think we need to move forward with this.
Any other questions or comments? I hear a motion to accept the committee report. Mr. Slough?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Greenow. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the committee report say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Legislation?
First reading for Resolution 22-2020. A resolution transferring funds within appropriated funds any clear emergency.
Mr. Russell?
Move that Council's statute rules is suspended in Resolution 22, 22-2020. Oh, God. Be given a second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Slough. All those in favor of suspending the rules say aye. If your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Rules are suspended and the clerk will give this resolution its second and third reading.
Resolution 22-2020, Resolution 22-2020.
Mr. Slough?
I have moved for adoption of Resolution 22-2020.
Second, Mr. Haas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye. If your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
First reading for Resolution 23-2020. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Finley, Ohio to enter into a cooperative fishing agreement with the State of Ohio. First reading for Resolution 24-2020. A resolution approving the expenditures made by the auditor's office on the attached list of vouchers which either exceed the purchase order or were incurred without a purchase order, exceeding the statuteary limit of $3,000, all in accordance with Ohio Revise Code 5705.41D.
Mr. Slough?
I have moved for adoption of Resolution 24-2020.
Second, Mr. Wolpser. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 24-2020 say aye. If your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Ordinances.
First reading for, third reading for Ordinance 2020-76. An ordinance authorizing mayor of the City of Finley, Ohio to enter into a contract with Hancock Wood Electric Cooperative Incorporated to light certain streets in the City of Finley, Ohio where its services are authorized and declared an emergency.
Mr. Slough?
I have moved for adoption of Ordinance 2020-076.
Second, Mr. Greenow. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie?
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser?
Aye.
Mr. Greenow?
Aye.
Mr. Haas?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for Ordinance 2020-77. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Slough?
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2020-077.
Mr. Wolpser, second. Any discussion? For quick. Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2020-077 say aye. If your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Aye.
Mr. Slough?
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie?
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
The rules, sorry, the rules are suspended and the clerk will give this its third reading.
Ordinance 2020 dash 82.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2020 dash 082.
Second, Mr. Greenow. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2020 dash 82, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading, first reading for 2020, first reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 84. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Finley, Ohio to enroll the city of Finley in the Bureau of Workers' Compensation Group Retrospective Rating Plan and declare an emergency. First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 85. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency. First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 86. An ordinance adopting the five-year update of the Solid Waste Management Plan of the Hancock County Solid Waste Management District and declared an emergency. First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 87. An ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move the council statutes for rules to be suspended in Ordinance 2020 dash 087 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Haas. All those in favor of suspending the rules and the ordinance be given its second and third reading, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended and the clerk will give Ordinance 2020 dash 87 its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020 dash 87, Ordinance 2020 87.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption.
Second, Mr. Wolpser. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
And Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 88. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move the council statutes for rules to be suspended in Ordinance 2020 dash 088 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Wolpser. All those in favor of suspending the rules on Ordinance 2020 dash 88, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer, oh, excuse me, Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
The rules are suspended and the clerk will give Ordinance 2020 dash 88 its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020 dash 88, Ordinance 2020 dash 88.
Mr. Wolpser.
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Greenow. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance 2020 dash 88, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
The rules of council have been suspended and the clerk will give Ordinance Number
2020 dash 89 its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020 dash 89, Ordinance 2020 dash 89.
Mr. Wolpser.
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Schindeldecker. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 90. An ordinance to accept bids as received and to authorize the mayor and our service director of the city of Finley, Ohio to enter into an agreement or agreements for the runway 725 rehab, project number 35293200, deappropriating funds, appropriate and transfer funds, and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move the council's statutes for rules to be suspended in Ordinance 2020 dash 90 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Schindeldecker. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended, suspended, and the clerk will give this its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020 dash 90, Ordinance 2020 dash 90.
Mr. Greenow.
Uh, move for adoption of 2020 dash 090.
Second, Mr. Slough. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Schindeldecker.
I have to ask. Has there ever in the history of this city been an ordinance to transfer 50 cents?
All right, maybe in the 1800s or something, but you know, some.
I can explain how that happened.
It's the state, I know.
When we applied for the state for the 5%, we asked for whatever, $9.50, because that was exactly 5%. Um, when they gave it to us, they didn't want to deal with the 50 cents. They kept their share, whatever, in $9 and made ours, whatever, in $10. Uh, so it doesn't seem like a big deal, but to keep the books even and to make Jim happy so he doesn't come yell at me, I'm asking that you deappropriate the appropriate 50 cents, yes.
What happens if we turn it down?
It's my life becomes a lot harder.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Or you're saying this is Jim's fault?
No, I'm not saying that. I did not say that.
We're gonna spend more money on tolls.
No kidding. All right.
We have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other discussion or questions? Uh, all those in favor, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
And Mr. Slough.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 92. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Slough.
I have moved the, uh, rules of council be suspended in Ordinance 2020 dash 091 be given its second and third reading.
I'm, I'm, Mr. Slough, we're on 92.
I'm sorry, I thought.
I think we're on 91.
I did, okay.
So I'd like clarification on which ordinance is adopted.
All right. Let's, let's back up. I think you missed 91.
Did I?
Yeah. We're gonna go back up to 91. That was on the agenda. All right, back.
First reading for Ordinance 2020 dash 91. An ordinance appropriating funds and, an ordinance appropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Slough.
I have moved the statutory rules of council be suspended in Ordinance 2020 dash 091 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Wolpser. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
The rules have been sus- suspended and the clerk will give this its, it's been, no, its third and fourth reading, or second and third reading. You got me all flustered on that.
Ordinance 2020 dash 91, Ordinance 2020 dash 91.
Mr. Greenow.
Move for adoption of Ordinance 2020 dash 091.
Second, Mr. Wolpser. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of Ordinance 2020 91, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Neimeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Wornikie.
Aye.
Mr. Wolpser.[1310.83]
and the letter that the mayor wrote to council regarding our extension would cover that. But just to clear up and get everyone on the same page, we're asking that the ordinance be passed so that there's no question as to everyone's ability to sign on the dotted line.
Mr. Wolfser. Make a motion that ordinance 2020-93 have the rules suspended and given second, third reading. Second, Ms. Warnakee. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Rules have been suspen- suspended and ordinance 2020-93 will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2020-93, ordinance 2020-93.
Mr. Wolfser.
Make motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Greenow. All those, oh, I'm sorry, questions or comments? All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Old business. Mr. Russell.
May I ask for us to reconsider resolution 23-2020, Jeff's fishing agreement with the state of Ohio? Because by reading it, it looks like we want to have that enforced or in place by, prior to our next meeting, so it would be kind of nice if we passed it by then.
Is that a motion?
Everybody likes...
Motion to reconsider. Do I hear a second? Mr. Slough, second. All those in favor of reconsidering resolution 23-2020, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Resolution is reconsidered. Mr. Russell.
Move the council statutes for rules to be suspended, and resolution 23-2020 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Haas. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
And Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Statutory rules have been sus- suspended and the resolution will be given its second and third reading.
Resolution 23-2020, resolution 23-2020.
Mr. Wolfser. Move for approval of resolution 23-2020. Ms. Warnakee, second. Any discussion? Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Old business.
I have an old business. It's not old. Do you have to wait till I ask for it? Oh, you have old. You are old.
It's been here through.
I am old, yes. Mr. Schmelz. I have some resolution or close to final resolution on ordinance 2020-054. As for reconsideration, bring it off the table if you want me to proceed with getting our RFPs installed with the main street mid-lack problem. That was actually an ordinance, but yeah, I understand. What did I say, resolution? Paul, would you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry, I was cut up in resolution. Ordinance 2020-054 was tabled back in June. It was an appropriation for funds into a project that we could use to redo the lane lights. Since June 16th, I've been working to try to finalize what those costs look like. We took it to traffic commission and between the last meeting and now, I am 99% certain that with the funds that I originally requested, we'll be able to complete that process. So, I'd like to have that taken off the table and those funds appropriated.
Mr. Wolfser. Make a motion that ordinance, excuse me, 2020-54 be taken off the table for reconsideration. Second, Mr. Greenow. All those in favor of pulling ordinance 2020-54 off the table, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Did I say Mr. Slough? Mr. Slough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, ordinance 2020-54 is pulled off the table. Mr. Wolfser.
Move to approve 2020-54.
Second, Ms. Warnakee. Discussion? Mr. Wolfser.
Paul, can you remind us how much this is for? $15,000 and some change. And that's gonna cover all of the upgrades with the lighting system that we discussed? That's correct. Just a little bit of background, that $15,000 is actually by agreement being taken from the retainers for the contractor. Gotcha. So, part of the lengthy discussion has been what sort of culpability both the supplier and the contractor hold. Certainly, we have some responsibility with our inspection and those kind of things, but I do feel that between the finger pointing, between the supplier and contractor, they also have some financial responsibility. So, between the $15,000 in general and about $9,000 in equipment that's gonna be donated, the city should be able to get this done without any out-of-pocket money ourselves.
Very good. Excellent job, by the way. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 2020-54, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Any other old business? New business? Ms. Mayor.
Good evening. Just a number of quick items. First, probably at the next meeting, you will have a letter from myself. They say it's a proclamation, but pretty much clarifying that the information we have received to date continues to support the position that we can use CARES Act funding for salaries related to our fire department safety services, given that they respond to medical calls. So, we will have some clarification on that, as well as a letter that will be before you to move forward with that. Additionally, just want to thank Paul and Brian both on the lane light. As Councilman Wolfser kind of pointed out, is that we were able to work with them and it's been a lengthy process, but they have donated the new equipment because they recognize that it's been a frustrating situation. So, glad that we were able to resolve that and will hopefully have that resolved in the near future. Appreciate you all moving forward on the insurance ordinance because of the confusion that occurred there, but we have that resolved. And then, because, well, actually, I won't even talk about the census quite yet. I just want to remind folks that we are, you know, looking for a new safety service director and it will be hard to replace Paul and the responsibilities that Brian has served in that service director position. We hope to stop receiving resumes on August 14th. So, if you know anyone that is interested, please have them apply prior to that date as we plan to get that filled by the end of the year. And last but not least, the census is still occurring. The Census Bureau announced today that they will stop field surveys at the end of September. So, they were originally supposed to be done in June or May or June, who even knows? Time has no meaning at this point. They pushed that back and originally we're gonna stop in October. They have now decided to stop at the end of September. We are currently at 71% response rate for the county, so we do need a number of households still to respond. So, please continue to reiterate the importance of responding online or when folks come to the doors of those households. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Do you have in hand what our final response rate was for the last census?
So, it's hard. I believe it was close to 80% after all of the canvassing. We are slightly ahead of where we were previously at the same time. So, we would certainly like to have close, you know, obviously, we'd love to have 100% of households respond, but, you know, 90% minimum response rate would be wonderful from a statistical standpoint. So, we still would like a number of households to respond, but we're in a pretty good position. But need to continue to reiterate the importance of getting an accurate count for our community.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wolfser.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Wolfser.
I want to take a quick second to thank the council president for his moment of silence for my father who passed away a week ago. I also wanted to thank the mayor and Brian and Paul for them allowing one of the city trucks, it was a brand-new one, looked great, and a fire truck in the funeral, it was on the hearse, to go underneath the American flag as it passed the fire station to honor him. My father served 16 years as safety service director and he loved every minute of it. And there was, that was absolutely a job he loved and I can tell you that there's nobody that loved the city more than my father did and he delighted in running it during those years under two different administrations, Mayor Beth DeBerg and Mayor Keith Rowling. So, Mr. President, thank you for that. No problem. He was a great man. Other new business? I've got a quick, I've received a letter. I opened when I got here tonight. There, it's written invitations to the I-75 County Route 99 interchange improvement meeting, public meeting to be held on Thursday, August 13th, online. And if anybody wants one, I know there was an email that went out today also to all the council. So, if you want some more information, I have it here. Any other new business? Oh, Mr. Russell.
On that line, they had a, they had an informational meeting for representatives from the county and the city. I think it was last week, online. And they've got some very interesting plans for County Route 99. I'd suggest that you take a look, one of the plans that is pretty interesting is to do a diverging diamond interchange over County Route 99, but also in addition, a pedestrian bridge over 75 that would be at the, at the Miracle League Park, the cube, and then go across 99 at that point. And that offers really an interesting potential for increasing our access to the park and both by foot and bike. And so, I just encourage people to attend the open house and make public comment on the project.
Ms. Mayor.
Yeah, so I just wanted to comment very quickly on that because I know I mentioned it a number of months ago. The projects and the discussion that's being had around 99 and 75, originally, we brought up concerns with the level of service locally on the 99-75 interchange. ODOT then subsequently came and reviewed and looked at it and recognized the opportunity for increased safety, increased service, and then further development. And then decided to move forward with actually applying in conjunction with the city of Finley to the federal government, Department of Transportation for funding. So, I just want to point out that this is a project, not only that the city of Finley is saying, yes, there's an opportunity, we need increased access, service, safety at this interchange to the Ohio Department of Transportation that they, but also the Ohio Department of Transportation has said to the federal government, we think this is a really great opportunity for investment and value in those transportation dollars. So, a great opportunity for us to put some local dollars towards it, but have increased opportunity, not just from funds coming from the state, but also from the federal government. And I believe we should know late August or mid-September if we receive that federal funding.
Mr. Russell.
And to follow up, you know, the diverging diamond interchange, that is like what is on the US-25 over 475 in Perrisburg. It's the, you know, kind of the wild, go to the other side of the road interchange. But the studies show that it is about, it lowers accidents by about 30, 30 to 35%. And so, even though it costs additional, it costs more money, the savings in just an accident money is significant. So, it's something to investigate, understand, and if you have questions about it, obviously, I think Brian and Paul will be two good resources on it, actually, you know, talk to you about it too. But if you get questions through the extension lines, it'd be good to know about the project before you see it. It's really a great opportunity for the city.
Yeah, Central Avenue at 47523 interchange also is the same. I travel that twice a week going up to Tammy Shannon. It's no problem. I mean, I don't think anybody would have any, any complaints on the way that traffic flows through there. Any other new business? Mr. Russell.
I'm planning zoning, scheduled for August 13th at noon. It is going to be a Zoom meeting. And along with the planning and zoning, I should have had a letter to council concerning this, but it slipped my mind. Councilman Haas is on the planning and zoning committee, but unfortunately, he has a standing conflict with our Thursday meetings at noon and has been unable to attend. And therefore, I asked council to warn it if she would be interested in serving on the planning and zoning committee.[1711.61]